Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. If you can, can you please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag with us? I need a roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Gillespie.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Spivey.
Here.
Mayor Ford.
Here. Okay, after the roll call, Pastor.
Father.
May we pray? Oh God, we thank you for our country and for our community. We pray for our community tonight. We pray they be with the council as they deliberate. We pray that you will give them wisdom and understanding, help them always to remember that they are here for the good of the community, for the common good. We pray for our country, Lord, with all of the division, all the strife. We pray that you will help us come together to work together for the common good, help us, help us as a nation to really include and receive one another. We pray for our world, Lord, with coronavirus and all of the other threats going on. We pray that you will give us peace and wholeness. But we thank you for the love that you give us, and we pray that you will help us to share that with one another. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Father.
Journal proceedings, approval minutes, regular city council meeting, January 27, 2020, and administrative meeting, February 3, 2020.
Second.
Are there any questions? If not, if all in agreement, let it be known by the sign of "I."
"I."
Okay, the "I" is have it, motion carries. At this time, we have communications and report by the mayor. First thing we have on the agenda tonight, we have the approval of new volunteers and commission appointments. And I'd like to ask, Joanne Wait, you still here? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, we are bringing on one, two, three, four volunteers for our commissions. We have, when I call your name, you come forward, we're gonna have you tell a little something about yourself, then you'll be appointed. William Jenkins for the Pastoral Commission, Richard Taylor for Theater in EDC, Eddie Parker for Fire and Police, and Michael Perry for Fire and Police. Come on up. Okay, you can go first. Tell us, hi, tell us a little bit about yourself.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. My name is William Jenkins. Let me thank you all, first of all, for the opportunity to serve my community. I'm excited about being here. I am a resident of Chicago, I'm sorry, I'm, the suburbs of Chicago, but I am a resident of Country Club Hills, been living there here for about seven and a half years. Married, Gloria Jenkins, I'm glad she's not here tonight, because sometime I kinda get that confused about the years. So I've been married for, I told her about thirty-seven years. We have four children. I am a community activist, present member of the Executive Board of Southland Ministerial Health Network. I have a total of twenty-four years of serving as a police chaplain, Ford Heights, Robbins. I work presently with the Sixth District Court, Chief Judge Tommy Brewer, have worked with Judge Bowden, Registered Minister with the Cook County Sheriff, Tom Dart's office. A total years of pastorage, about forty years of pastorage. I presently pastor in the City of Lansing, the Flesh Becoming Word Church, and I'm excited to be a part and then offer my services to my own community. Thank you.
What's the address?
Church, my house.
How about the church?
The church is 18424 Stony Island, Lansing, Illinois. My house, 4818 Summer Hill.
That's okay. Thank you. Thank you, Pastor Jenkins.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Richard Taylor. I've been a resident of Country Club Hills since 2004. Been married to my beautiful wife, my two boys, Richard III and Christian Xavier Taylor here as well. Christian said, Dad, I'm gonna show up, I need to be your twin, so you wanted to wear a bowtie as well.
We're gonna bring him up front in a little bit.
But just honored to be here. I believe in, you know, see something that kinda inspires you, something that you can look at and kind of hang your hat on, and something you can kind of tie yourself to to kind of keep you honest. There's a quote by Gandhi that says, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of others." And serving, to me, is obligation. Being a baseball coach here in Country Club Hills for Little League teams, and knowing that I know nothing about baseball, but I have a heart for the kids, and it was a need to serve as coach. I was also served as the basketball coach.
Mr. Taylor, can you speak into the mic so they can catch you on TV?
I also serve as basketball coach for Victory Epitolic Church here in Madison. So I coached the biddies, three, four, up to seven-year-old kids. We are the defending champions as well. We won the championship last year, we're looking to defend it again.
Great.
Not that I'm competitive, but, but again, this is just an honor to be asked by Alderman Spivey. When he calls, I just pick up the phone, because I know he's calling to ask for some sort of service within the community, and if he calls, then it's honor for me that he chose to call on me to do that. Meeting with you, Mayor Ford as well, thank you for the opportunity and sitting with you and sharing your thoughts and your vision as well, and I hope to be of service and do justice by this community. So thank you for the privilege and opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike, hold on a second, we have a special for you. We have a resolution, we want to have the city clerk to read.
We're putting you back to work.
The City of Country Club Hills, Office of the Mayor and the City Council, proclamation recognizing Country Club Hills Fire Department Lieutenant Michael Perry. Whereas the Southland is composed of many things, including firefighters, law enforcement, communities, residents, schools, parks, businesses, and civic organizations, and whereas each of these components are dependent upon the individuals within them in order to be successful. And whereas Lieutenant Michael Perry is a loving husband, father, grandfather, family member, colleague, friend, and resident of the City of Country Club Hills for over forty years, who shares his love of family and community, and whereas retired Lieutenant Michael Perry of Country Club Hills, Illinois, is a thirty-year fire service veteran, who began his service as a paid-on-call fireman in July of 1990, and served in various roles, rising to the rank of Lieutenant in 2019. And whereas Lieutenant Michael Perry, in various roles throughout the fire department, served as firefighter, engineer, overall problem solver, and provided excellent vehicle maintenance, and whereas Lieutenant Michael Perry served with professionalism, compassion, and ensuring the best medical care for not only Country Club Hills residents, but also neighboring communities. And whereas Lieutenant Michael Perry initiated the St. Colletta's Christmas gift-giving program to the City of Country Club Hills, and this program has brought many smiles to its many residents. And whereas Lieutenant Michael Perry's dedication to the fire service, his firehouse family, residents, and neighboring communities, has enhanced the life and quality of the fire department and the City of Country Club Hills. And whereas the City of Country Club Hills appreciates and respects Lieutenant Michael Perry for his commitment and contributions made to the City of Country Club Hills, now therefore, I, James W. Ford, Mayor, and the City Council, the City of Country Club Hills, offer this proclamation in recognition and honor of the career of Lieutenant Michael Perry, whose roles have provided leadership, encouragement, and inspiration to all. In witness thereof, this tenth day of February 2020, Honorable James W. Ford, Mayor, Patricia D. Hudson, City Clerk.
Congratulations. Thank you, everyone.
I guess I don't have to say.
How long you been a resident of Country Club Hills?
Sixty-two years.
I thought that was important, sixty-two years. Okay, you can proceed.
What can I say now? I wanted to join the Police and Fire Commission to further serve my community. And figured this would help out, but everything else was said, so.
All right, thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, we'll start with Pastor Jenkins first, I guess. Who are you gonna start? Yeah. Well Pastor, do you have family with you? Yeah. Come on up here. Okay, I need a motion, Alderman, for the appointment of volunteers.
Motion for appointment for the volunteer commission appointments.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, aye is have it, the motion carries, you are now official.
All right, gentlemen, if you could come with me.
Did you need to do the resignation? Lieutenant Perry?
What was that again?
Ah, yeah.
Somebody catch Lieutenant Perry, bring him back.
Okay. So 5A, yeah, we did that one, okay. Under the mayor's communications, 5A, I need approval of the resignation of Country Club Hills firefighter, fire department Lieutenant Mike Perry. I need a motion?
Motion for approval for the resignation of Country Club Hills Fire Lieutenant Michael Perry.
Second.
Resolution agreement.
Resignation agreement for Lieutenant Michael.
Resolution agreement, okay. I have a motion on the floor, and I heard a second.
Davis.
Okay, Alderman Davis, second, so I have a motion and a second. I need a roll call, please.
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Spivey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Michael. Did he come back? Oh, okay, that's all, yeah, we're done.
Now you're officially retired.
Your resignation have been accepted. Okay, so I think that's all I have under the mayor's communications. Oh, we got the approval of the wage schedule. That is the last, that's item C, 5C. I need a motion to approve the wage schedule.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table it if we can. There's been some discussion with a couple of us, Alderman.
Second.
Okay. It's been properly motioned and been second for table. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett? Davis?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Spivey?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Next is the city clerk's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. The city clerk's second annual mobile, second and third mobile events were held over this past weekend. Would like to say a great thank you to Mr. Ross of Parks and Recs, along with his staff or their assistant. We had the Illinois State Treasurer's Office out, and they were very impressed with the organization at our CRC. Just to let you know, the state has over $2.9 billion in unclaimed funds, and some of it might be yours, so you definitely want to check on that. We also want to thank Commissioner Natal, and we want to thank Juanita Rose Bar for coming out with the voter registration information. This is to represent that pink turns red. We would like to thank the ladies of Alpha Kappa Alpha Theta Row Omega Chapter, who stopped by to share in recognition of February, which is Women's Health Month. This beautiful basket filled with items for women, so we'll put this basket in the lobby tomorrow morning, just a couple little trinkets that would be nice for women. Thank you. Reminder, city hall will be closed on Monday, February 17th, in observance of the President's Day holiday, and will resume normal hours on Tuesday, February 18th at 8:00 a.m. Also, the annual Black History Program again is Saturday, February 29th, Hillcrest High School, 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. In celebration of Black History Month, I would like to share a little-known Black History fact. Does anyone know who George Edwin Taylor is?
Firefighter for Country Club Hills.
In 1904, George Edwin Taylor, often forgotten in discussion of Black American political pioneers, ran for president as the candidate in the National Negro Liberty Party, sometimes known as the National Liberty Party. So that is a Black History fact. End of report.
All right, thank you. Okay, at this time, we go to the committee, automatic committee reports, and the first committee is the Finance Committee. Alderman Lockett's the chairman.
Thank you, Mayor. Seeking council's approval for the vouchers in amount of $22,779.38.
Second.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, I have a motion and a second on the floor. I need a roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Spivey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, next.
Next is on the theater contract, which you want to hold off on for further discussion.
Okay. Okay, so is that end of your report?
End of my report, yes. Should we do a motion?
So we'll table it.
Make a motion to table the theater contract.
Second.
All right, it's been probably a motion second, that the theater contract will be tabled. All those in favor, on, roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Spivey?
Yes.
All right.
End of report.
All right, we have law and ordinance government operation, Alderman Gillespie.
There's no report at this time.
Okay, Public Works Utilities, Alderman Davis, Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to seek council approval for homeward disposal contract dated from May 31, 2020, to May 31, 2025, and this is the current vendor that we're using now.
Second. Okay, it's been probably motion second. Do we have any questions, comments?
Yeah, I could just point out, Mayor, that we did look at other companies as well, Waste Management, New Way Republic, and there are some advantages that we get from this company, such as they do two citywide branch pickups annually on dates that are agreed with both parties. They also do four citywide street sweeps annually, and then I want to point out this, it's with the recyclables, of course, we have the brown can, the items that can be put in there, and a couple of them I didn't realize, but it's, of course, newsprint, junk mail, glossy paper, tin, and aluminum containers, actually white, brown, and green glass bottles, plastic containers, telephone books, which I don't think we have too many of those, and chipboard and corrugated cardboard. So those are just some of the highlights, and it's actually a 3% increase, and of course, this rate actually comes out a little less than those other ones would have been for us, and we looked at the other advantages the city was getting, so.
All right, thank you for that information, additional information. I have a motion and a second on the floor. Roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Spivey?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
And that's the end of my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Next committee is Economic Development and Planning. Alderman Spivey's Chair.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, residents. Approval for zoning change for Cargo Vans of Chicago LLC from C1 to C3, changing the current business from a car wash to a used car lot. And the zoning board had made those recommendations, but the council declined their
Right.
their request, so exactly.
Well, what we have to do is, we have to do a vote.
How would you like to go about that?
Right, so we have to make a motion.
Okay. I just want to be clear on it.
Right.
It should be a motion to not approve.
No, no, no.
Motion to approve?
To approve.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the recommendations from, from the zoning board.
All right, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably motion and second. Are there any other questions? Okay, if not, I need a roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
No.
Davis?
No.
Gillespie?
No.
Evans?
No.
Spivey?
No.
Okay, the noes have it, motion carries, and motion denied, okay. Request is denied.
Okay, item B, approving ordinance amending regulations for cannabis. This is for the cultivating ordinance.
Cultivation, infusion.
Yes.
All of that that goes into it. I need a second, please.
Second.
Okay, it's been probably a motion second. Are there any questions? No questions, roll call, please.
Alderman Lockett?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Gillespie?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Spivey?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
Also, Mayor, we have a new restaurant that's coming to town. It's called Seafood Shack, 4858 West 183rd Street. I think they're in the process of coming, but it's kind of moving slow right now, so I just want to bring that up to everyone's attention. End of my report.
All right, thank you. Next report. Insurance Risk Management, all the women, Evans.
Thank you, Mayor. No report at this time, but my next meeting is scheduled for February 26th at 6:00 p.m. End of my report.
All right.
Motion open the floor to the public?
Second.
Okay, public, if you would like to speak to the council, please come up and limit your time to three minutes or less. Speak directly into the mic and give us your name.
My name is Joan Wolf. We've lived in the community about forty-four years, and I'm from the Fourth Ward. I'm speaking about increase in dues for the senior commission, excuse me, that's separate from Oak, for the Oak Senior Organization. I was one of the founding members about twenty years ago. There was a group of us seniors, and some from the Park District. We got together and tried to figure out what would be a good senior organization for this community. We wanted a place for the seniors to go that was safe. We wanted something for them to do, socialization, and a get-together whenever they could, according to what we had planned. One of the things we didn't want was what the other communities were doing at the time, and that was, we didn't want discrimination between residents and non-residents. To that, we meant, we don't want them charged more than we are. We want it open to everyone. Well, after many years, Mayor Welsh doubled the non-residential. We started out at $12 a year overall. Then we went for the non-residents, we raised to $24, and we lost members. And probably the ones we lost were the ones that needed it the most, the ones that couldn't afford to pay large amounts to do things. The other thing is that we are paying it once a year. The new dues come down to $3 a year, I mean, a month, for residents, and $5 a month for non-residents, but we don't pay it that way. We have to pay it all at once. I would like to know what we paid in as opposed to what we spent. We, as seniors, we get water, or soda, coffee, and popcorn. We no longer get any food that they are paying for, that the organization is paying for. We bring our own for ourselves and for other people. This would have to be done over a year's period, like 2019, because people pay their dues according to when they joined, so it's done all throughout the year. So you have to take that into account if you were trying to figure out, did we overspend? For a monthly informational meeting, of which we had one this afternoon, the speakers are generally non-paid. We get organizations and so on that they do not, we do not have to pay them to come to our meeting, and very often, they even supply food. Now, the Oak Organization is a place for seniors to go, to get out of the house, get away from the television, and to socialize, and we look out for each other. If someone is missing a couple times at a meeting, or at playing cards or something, we worry about them. We try and find out, are they away? Are they sick? Do they need any help of any kind? So we're more than just a social organization. We really care about each other. And remember, the member of the Oak Organization, when they found out that the dues were going to be raised. We really care about each other. And remember the, member of the Oak Organization, when they found out that the dues were going to be raised to thirty-six dollars for, um, residents and sixty dollars for non-residents? Many of them, because it didn't go into effect until February first, they paid in January. That gives us one more year that we know we're going to be an organization. But many resident, non-residents made clear, when their dues are up, they are not going to renew at that rate. It seems to many of us that the reason the dues were raised was to eliminate the senior Oak program. And when the dues are due for a lot of the people, that's what's going to happen. We're not going to be an organization. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions for you. Um, your current dues are how much today?
Today, they're thirty-six dollars. January, they were twelve.
Thirty-six dollars?
Yes.
Annually?
Yes.
Okay, and you receive popcorn, water, pop?
And coffee.
And coffee.
For those that drink coffee.
Okay. And, uh, you, you have a place to go, it's a safe place, safe environment. Okay. Anyone else?
My question was, from what I understand, the Oak program is under the Park District, and as residents and taxpayers, that money goes into this program. I don't know why the Oaks was put under the Park District. So my question is, if we're paying taxes to fund services under the Park District, why are we paying extra money to be in the Oak program?
Well, everyone in, in the, in the Park District pays additional funds. Basketball, uh, volleyball, dancing, they all pay a different fee. So no one enjoys an activity without subsidizing an additional fee. So you're not the only one, no.
Well, I'm not saying, my problem is paying this extra, why did it jump up three times as much as we, we were paying? We were paying twelve dollars a year, and now it's thirty-six. And I'm just trying to figure out, as a resident and as an Oak member, why did it go up so high?
Did you ask the, the Park District?
Yes, yes, I did.
And he, okay. I will ask him also.
I appreciate it if you do. I really do.
I had a question about the non-resident rate. What did it, what was it before?
It started out at twelve, was raised by, uh, Mayor Welsh to twenty-four, and now it's ninety-sixty.
For non-residents.
For non-residents.
Okay.
It started at twelve?
Yes, sixty. We have a letter that, that states that.
Yeah.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, that's like about three dollars a month or so?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they have to pay it all at one time.
I understand.
We pay it yearly, but a lot of, a lot of times, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead, Ed.
A lot of times, people like me, I don't play cards, I don't do a lot of things. It's just certain things I like to do. When I go to the meetings, I like to hear the guest speakers that talk about programs that are good for seniors. And when we go on trips, we pay for that. You pay for bus transportation, and you pay for the restaurant fees, and, and any other things. So I can't see why we're, why they doubled, they tripled it, really.
Okay, well, when you go on a trip, you pay for the restaurant fee and a small fee for the bus.
Yeah, most of the time, I don't even ride the bus, so I meet them there.
Yeah. Well, the city picks up the bus, and the bus driver, and the, and the, uh, and the fuel and everything, too.
I understand that.
So we share that responsibility. We even buy lunch for the bus drivers, because you guys don't provide that for the bus drivers either. So we do that as well when they go on a trip. So we kind of share that, but we can, we can work this out. I don't see why we, you know, can't work this out. You know, three dollars, um, a month, if you want to pay it on a monthly basis, I really don't have any objections to that. Uh, but I think we can probably, um, sit down with Mr. Ross and see what we can come up with.
Okay, 'cause, because our members are gonna go to the neighboring communities.
Oh, they?
Hazel Crest, Markham.
They don't want to do that, and it's more.
Well, they don't pay, no. No, they don't pay. I checked it out.
Oh.
They don't pay.
All right, that's a good deal. Let me know how I can sign up for that.
Okay.
No, jokingly, uh, let's get together.
Okay, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes. My name is Rika James. I live at one seven seven eighty Arlington Drive. I am a senior commissioner. I've been in Country Club Hills twenty-seven years. Most of the seniors, I found out, are volunteer. We volunteer for our community. You all not blaming or saying no names, but you want to go up. Seniors don't have as much money as we had when we was working. Some may be a little rich, but not all of us. And why? I could see going up double, but you all went up from twelve dollars to thirty-six. It's terrible. And I remember something that I said to you. I don't want to mention it, but you got to remember, when it come time for voting for all of you, we are the one that do the voting. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. Uh, also, Oak, uh, remember that we have a staff down there, too, that, uh, you know, service you guys. Next.
I don't know. Good evening, Dwyer Williams. Speaking of money, I'm gonna talk about these red light cameras. We know for a fact that, you know, I, I hope that something can be worked out for the seniors, for, uh, these things, because, you know, we don't have the money. Our community don't have a lot. Now, it's been proven, it's starting to be proven more and more that these red light cameras are nothing but a money-grabbing thing. I wish that our community, Mr. Mayor, City Council, would get together, be maybe the first in our community, the first in the southern suburbs, start phasing these cameras out. Let's give our residents a break. We know for a fact, everybody's gonna say, it's for safety. It's not for safety. It has nothing to do with safety. It's a money-grabbing, um, thing that everybody's getting paid but the residents. We have red light cameras on anywhere you turn in Country Club Hills, one hundred and sixty-seven in Pulaski, one hundred and seventy-fifth in Pulaski, one hundred and eighty-third in, in Pulaski, one hundred and eighty-third, Cicero, one hundred and seventy-fifth in Cicero, and matter of fact, the one on one hundred and seventy-fifth in Cicero, if you pull up, you don't even have to get to the light, to the line, and the light will go off. Blup, blup. Can we please, let's be the first, let's lead on something, and start phasing these things out. We know that they are nothing but a money-grabbing situation. You can't come to court, 'cause you come to court, it's nothing but a king of real court, you're gonna lose. That's two hundred dollars. If I don't have a hundred, I'm not gonna have two hundred. I'm gonna lose my license, now I can't go to work. Next thing you know, now I can't pay my taxes on my house. Which one do you want? I'm just saying, let's be the first. The residents, if the mayor and them want, let's think about this. We have a representative, Ms. Martin, we have a senator, Mr. Hastings, we have a Cook County, uh, Ms. Sims. We have to make some calls, let's make some calls, let's get these things out, out of our communities. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll close the floor. Got one more?
Hopefully it'll be, hopefully it'll be the last week, I'll go pretty quick. My name is Tom Blazek. I've been a resident for forty-nine years. I live on Patrick Avenue, and I'd like to know a little more, how can I find out more about the wage scheduling? Or the rumor that, uh, the police officers may have to give up their increase for the fire department? And I'd like more information on it, if it's possible.
Be glad to do that. You can talk to our finance chair, we can do that, update you on that, sure.
Thank you very much.
All right.
One more thing. I want to make sure that you are not confusing the Oak Senior Organization with the Oak Commission. We are completely different things. The Oak Commission has a budget, and we put on different things for the community, for the seniors. Oak is Oak. It's for the seniors to come and relax and enjoy.
Yep, if I can, um, and I'm sure, um, the Alderman did sit here with me, this is the first we hearing about a dollar, from a dollar to three dollars. It's totally new to me. This is nothing that we've discussed or tried to budget for anything else. But I do know that, um, the cost of living and prices of things go up, whether you're a senior, a toddler, or what. Milk ain't a dollar a gallon anymore. It's three dollars a gallon, and a can of pop ain't a quarter anymore. You go to any gas station, a can of pop costs you almost two dollars. Well, I, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I, this is the first I'm hearing of it.
Yeah.
And I support the Oak, but again, um, it is something new to me, and I think along with my fellow, um, council members here, it's the first I've heard of it.
Okay. All right, so, um, where are we?
Motion to close the floor.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Addison Robinson, and I've been a resident for Country Club Hills over thirty years. Um, I'm not really sure what, I hear the rumor about the police officers and, you know, the cuts and all that, but Country Club Hills, since I've been at Country Club Hills, no, let me take that back. I lived in Provincetown. When I moved to Provincetown, it was a wreck. Country Club Hills has cleaned that place up. They have done a wonderful job. I've seen them, you know, just, just help people do certain things that's like out of their league. There's officers out here that go above and beyond, like, I go to school for law, and I get my master, I mean, my bachelor's degree on the twenty-third of March for criminal justice, and I see and I read and, you know, and I understand now how hard it is for law enforcement, how dangerous it is, like, when they leave their house and they kiss their wife or their husband or whatever goodbye and they kiss, they don't know if they're going home, because they're going, they running into so much chaos and so much trouble in these streets, like, and then when I heard that they was, you know, cutting and cutting their wages and, they, they work hard for their money. I mean, they, they really do. I just want to find out a little bit more about it, but I know you told the gentleman, you know, to talk to someone, and, and I really do want to, you know, find out more.
The truth is, we didn't say anything about cutting wages. I don't know who told you the rumor. See, what happens in Country Club Hills, rumors get out there, and no one comes to the city or to the Alderman or anyone else, elected officials, to find out the truth. Everybody has to cut the budget. If we don't cut the budget, then, you know, we're, we're left with raising taxes, and we can't do that. So everybody have to, have to skim back. Each department has to do that. Okay, so it could be the, the spending, it could be any of those things. And so, um, I don't know where you get these rumors from, but...
I mean, I, I, you know, I just heard a little bit about it, you know, I just kind of like, it, it was like a hit and miss, but I'm just saying, if, if anything, the police shouldn't have, you know, nothing being taken away from them. You know, I understand you have a budget cut, you know, you have to do what you have to do, but they like, the important ones, they keep us safe out here.
You preaching to the choir. You think we don't know that?
And I, I mean, yeah, I mean, they've helped me plenty of times, and I commend them.
They helped all of us, so we're not, we're not, uh, you know, disputing that at all. What I'm saying to you is that, when you say cuts, you don't understand what we are asking, okay? And so, that's why I'm saying that the rumor mill is not correct. To get good information, come to the city, and we can give you good information.
Okay, so then that's what I heard you tell the, the gentleman, that?
Yes.
The one you could talk to.
Yes, mhm.
But I, I mean, I'm just saying, I'm just talking on behalf of the police department.
I heard you, yes, yes, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Close the floor to the public, please.
Motion to close the floor to the public.
Second.
All right. Uh, this time, um, I'm sorry, all those in favor, let it, nobody signed a by?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Uh, now, let's go to the Aldermanic Report, and we'll start with Alderman Spivey tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. About the Oak Room, let me just say some things. Ms. James, how you doing? You guys, um, I think that was like, for the residents, sixty-six percent increase, and the non-residents, a sixty percent increase. This is the first time that we've heard about it, but I'm sure that there's something that can be done to make sure that things are taken care of for you guys. And I'm sure that we're gonna work hard on that, because, uh, that's, you know, you senior, you seniors and you, on the, on a fixed income, and I've been down there playing cards with you and having a good time, and having pizza, and having a great, uh, time with you guys, and I think there's something that we need to address in the budget for the, uh, Park District. But I never, uh, I don't think that ever came across to any of the councilmen's, well, on that, but I'm sure that there's something that can be done. Secondly, I'd like to, uh, thank all the commissions, those that are serving here in Country Club Hills for, um, getting involved, uh, involved in the community, and I especially want to thank Richard Taylor and his family. He's in the fourth ward, always there for me whenever I need him to do something, always there to help me volunteer throughout basketball, turkeys, and things of that nature. So I really appreciate you joining the team, and, um, we look forward to doing some things, especially with those two right next to you. They're the top, top dogs right there, that, that make it happen in, um, in the community as well, Tom and Jenny. As far as the police department is concerned, uh, as far as we're in go with police, these gentlemen, they, um, have done a great deal in Country Club Hills, and they also have done a great deal in Country Club Hills in the fourth ward, specifically dealing with Provincetown. They have always been there for the residents, uh, for me as well, uh, they, they service, and I don't see exactly, um, anything happening to our police department, you know? They, they're there for, for service and the fire department, but, um, I think they're doing a fantastic job, so I'm sure that the council have their support, um, in making things work. Also, I will be having a fourth ward meeting Wednesday, uh, that's February nineteenth, fourth ward, seven P M. at the firehouse station on one hundred and seventy-fifth Street. And also, I would like to take time out to recognize a young lady that lived here in the fourth ward in, um, Premier Estates. Uh, she had a book released last night. Her name is Felicia Alfred, and this is the great book that she has, and I definitely want to thank the fire, fire department and police department for coming out and representing. Uh, this book is about her grandfather who lost, uh, who, who lost his entire family in a fire in Chicago. He was a detective. And, uh, so she put this book together, and it was a, a great book for her family to heal, and I just wanted to recognize her. She's our very own, um, resident, and she lives here. So kudos to her, and, and, uh, I hope her family can heal and, um, move forward. End of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Evans.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I do concur with what Alderman Lockett, um, expressed, and Alderman Spivey, is that we were unaware of the increase to the Oak, uh, organization program, and we will be taking a look at that, uh, increase. And, um, I do know, as Alderman Lockett mentioned, that things do increase, things do go up, but, um... But most of the seniors, if not all of them, are living on a fixed income. And a three-hundred percent increase is not even in line with what most seniors get on a yearly base for their, yearly basis for their cost of living increase with their social security. So it's not even consistent with that. So we will be taking a look at that because we want to encourage the seniors to, you know, remain in our program and get the information that they need and utilize. And even other seniors from other communities to, you know, be a part of our Oak Program as well. It really helps to share that information around. And the seniors are very supportive, as you mentioned, of our community. They do a lot of volunteering, so we certainly don't want to lose anyone from the organization with the increase. And I think I heard the mayor say he was definitely willing to break that down into monthly payments to make it easier because lump sums like that, you know, we look at, us working folks look at thirty-six dollars as not a lot of money. But if you're a senior, it could be very much so a lot of money at one time. So if we can help you do that, first, bringing that back down reasonable and then making it affordable to be able to pay a monthly or bimonthly way as well, that would be helpful. So I do want to, I will work with the aldermen. I'm sure we're going to work on that and get that back down for you guys. I did write a question for Mr., if I say this correctly, Blazek? Got it. You said something about the police officers giving up the increase for firefighters? Giving up the, okay, all right, yes, we need to discuss that. So, and then I'll piggyback off of that in which there was another young lady and I didn't catch her name, asking about the cutting wages for police officers and things. I think there is some, you know, information we did have on the agenda in which we tabled. It was a wage schedule. And a lot of folks look, may look at that or saw that as a wage cut. It is more, I'm going to say, a cap on wages as opposed to a wage cut. And I do think though that anyone in a union position though should not be a part of that. And I think that's why, that's why I supported tabling it because you're mixing apples and oranges. You have people in union environments and you're discussing wages about that when their, their salaries and compensations are bound by the union contracts. So we shouldn't really even be discussing them in the same context as everyone else. So that's why I supported the tabling of that, so we can have further discussion on that. And then Mr. Williams, about the red light cameras, I agree with you. Their, you know, input in a lot of communities regarding, you know, safety issue. And it's really not a safety issue because I've myself have witnessed several accidents on One Hundred and Eighty-Third and Cicero. Very, very dangerous. It's brought that light down at the corner multiple times. So if that's not the opposite of safety, I don't know what it is. So I do agree with you. I'd like to work with you on resolving the red light camera issues that we do have in Country Club Hills. We have to, you know, minimize them. I know in some locations you see the counters. I have to look at the data to see if the data, the counters being up support, you know, reducing the number of accidents or what they're actually doing. But I do, I do see that some counters have gone up at some of the camera locations. So with that being said, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Glasby?
Yes. My first thing I would like to say is we have the census takers that will be coming around and we will be getting letters to that effect for the census count. So we want to make sure that everybody get counted within the city of Country Club Hills. Make sure that your neighbor, if they doesn't know about it, make them aware of it because this is very important for the city and the state of Illinois. Also, I would like to say, I'm not sure whether we have power over this matter to regulate the amount of money that the seniors pay. But if we do, if we do not, if we do it, we don't. I would like to see the residents, whether in the city or out of the city, pay the same fee. Because we're all in this together. Whether you're in Heiser Crest, Homewood, Flosmo, et cetera, et cetera. We're all in this together. And we numbers what makes things work sometime. And that's strength in numbers. So let's get together and whether it's the Park District or the city, let's, I would encourage the Park District is to, hey, minimize the costs and make all the costs the same, resident and non-resident. Also, for those that know the Ware family, John Ware and Henry Edgeware. John Ware passed this week, I believe it was this last week.
Last week.
And he'd been a resident in the city of Country Club Hills for thirty-plus, plus years. And they've been a very outstanding resident for the city. We need lots, lots more people like the Wares. And they will be having the, I would like for everybody to, if you know the Wares, to make some arrangement to attend. The funeral will take place Wednesday from one P.M. until five P.M. So if you can, we would appreciate you coming out supporting the Ware family. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, at this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence for John Ware, longtime resident of Chicago, Country Club Hills. If we can have a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Alderman Lockett?
Thank you, Mayor. And the residents that came out. Just clear up a few things and some things that some of the residents should know about the city and budgets and how it works. The city of Country Club receives approximately, maybe somewhere around fourteen million dollars a year in property taxes. Well, eight million dollars of that goes to the police department. Then another three and a half million goes to the fire department, which is eleven and a half million dollars. Which leaves us with just a little bit for operations and different things that's provided services throughout the city. So at some point in time, what the city has to do is cap salaries. We're not trying to take nothing away from nobody. But when you're hired in, then you make, you hired in at fifty, you can go up to sixty-five thousand or seventy thousand dollars and that's it. You need another position. You need to go seek employment somewhere else or something like that. No one's trying to take no policeman away. No one's trying to take the fire department away. But we can't let these services over exceed our budget. Because if so, there's only one way to pay them. And that's by to raise property taxes. Which we have or will not do. So before years ago, the previous mayor, I just have to say it, he screwed up. He hired these guys in at sixty-five thousand dollars a year. They were making more money than the Illinois State Policeman and that became a problem. And the guys would max out at a hundred thousand dollars within three years. We can't afford to pay hundred thousand dollar plus salaries for a small town like Country Club Hills. Now, do they provide great service? Yes, they do. I believe we have one of the best police, fire departments in the whole Southland, state of Illinois. Are they professional? Yes. The fire department there, when you call? Yes. Even to save money, we have, and most of you probably don't even know this, is that we had to get rid of our nine-one-one system by state mandate. If your town is not twenty-five thousand people or plus, then we had to combine with a call center. We have been on a call center now for over a year. We still get the perfect and great services that's provided with our fire and police. But that's another way of cutting the budget, cutting money and saving money. So there's not only, it's not only just the police department or that, it's the whole budget itself with the public works, with, this will affect the alderpersons and everyone else. It's just not picking on one. So let's all be mindful that we're only trying to do the best thing and the right thing for the residents of Country Club Hills. And the other thing is, I just want to say, happy Valentine to all you sweethearts out there. End of my report.
Thank you, Alderman Lockett. Alderman Davis?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I just got a question because, I mean, everybody said over and over, we didn't know about the increase. But this is for our attorney. I know the Park District, they have their own board. So is it, did they raise the, at their board meeting, did they raise the rate or how that? Well, how did, how did he raise? Wait a minute. Okay, but they do that within themselves, right? I mean, we don't have any jurisdiction. Right? Well, I would, I would suggest this then, and maybe they didn't understand, they should go to the park board meeting. And you need, you should really stress that with them because trust me, none of us knew anything about that. I mean, you bringing information to us, so. And we, if we don't have authority over that, it would be important to, and they do, I don't know when their meetings are, but Alderman Evans, you might know.
Third Thursday of every month. At six o'clock.
So I would encourage you all, the same issues you had, because of course, everybody up here supports our seniors. I think a couple of us are close to seniors now, so.
Close?
I'm not far, so I can't, I'm trying to, what is age anyway? What's the age?
Fifty-five.
Well, I'm a senior, so I should be joining the Oak Room too. And my wife, who's retired, so I get it. Okay, thank you for that. Danny, I just want to stress one thing to the, you know, it looks like, and this Dwyer, Mr. Williams had some great questions, obviously the Oak Rooms concerned about their fees. And, you know, when you're running a, there's revenues and there's expenditures. And nobody up here is trying to hurt anybody. I mean, we, and one of the reasons why that was tabled, we want to make sure that we're doing this properly. I mean, I know the fire department just had their collective bargaining, so we want to make sure that it doesn't incur any suits or anything like that. So I think we all want to have that kind of discussion. But I want to point out, just so everybody knows, our salaries are increasing, all salaries in the city, cost of living, pensions are going up. You just heard me, we passed a garbage three percent. Our water rates are going up. So those are expenditures and that continues to increase. So we have to come up with additional revenues. Other than that, it's going to be off balance. So Mr. Williams, you had a good point on the red light cameras. It's been in the news a lot. And there is actually a bill that they're considering in the House that they can actually have all the non-home rule communities. If it passes, they would have to do away with the red light cameras. So, but again, I don't know the exact number, so don't quote me on that. But it's, I know we, it's over a half million dollars that we get in fines for that, which you're right, it shouldn't be a revenue source, but it is. The reality is, we do have to look at that. And I concur with you now, after, you know, doing my own research and looking at it, you know, I think it is questionable whether it is just, you know, what it's supposed to be. But again, keep in mind that, and we do have the authority, you know, we do away with those things, you know, then, you know, we have these other issues that, you know, we're dealing with. So it's tough. I mean, that's why you all, you know, support or vote for your elected officials so that we have to do our due diligence. And, you know, one of our primary responsibilities over, are over the finances, all of us. So we have to make sure that we're being, you know, that we're doing the right thing with that. And I, everybody is committed. Nobody wants to raise that. We're taxpayers too, so I can't, I can't afford any additional increases. So we got to, you have to balance those things. And that's where the tough conversations comes in and it will happen. I just want to make sure we're doing it in the, in the best possible way that won't impact our city negatively. Because I concur, I think we need more police now. I mean, it's changing times, so that's another issue. But again, how you going to pay for them? You got to pay, you know, you got to find the money somewhere, somehow, you know, because there is an influx in crime, you know, all across. And we, one thing I know, particularly in the Fifth Ward, they have zero tolerance for crime. I mean, I get calls, that's my number one. Main thing I get phone calls is for crime, anything that happens. And it's just, nobody's tolerating that. So we have, and we have had some meetings to address any situation, but, so we need to, and everybody wants to continue to support our main resources in this city and that's police, fire, public works as well, our streets. We got to find money to do the streets. I mean, there's some of those areas that I know have concerns. So that's another budgeted item that you got to continue to put in. I think that is, really, I think that was it. Okay, but that's the end of my report.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Just want to say a couple of things and then we can move on. As far as cutting salaries, like I said to the young lady, I don't know where that rumor came from. But I can tell you that every business that I know of, every corporate company that I know of, has a starting and a cap salary. You can all make so much in a position. And so we just went back and pulled out the ordinance from two thousand and seven and updated it with new figures with today's current rates. And we wanted to make sure that each employee can make in between the starting and the end. So if you're not at the end, then your salaries can continue to, you continue to receive a salary increase. But what we have to do because of the expenditures, we have to look at that. We have to be careful and accountable for the dollars that you've given us to spend. And we have to make sure that our budget is balanced. So sometimes we have to make sure that we make cuts here and there. But I can tell you that our police department, our fire department is one of the best in the Southland, in the south suburban area. And we support them one hundred percent. And we would not do anything to jeopardize that support or that relationship that we have with them. But we still have to be accountable to your taxpayers as far as revenue is concerned. Revenue has to come in to offset the expenditures. If the expenditures is more than the revenue, then we have to cut, just like in your own family. If you're spending more than you're making, then something has to give. You have to sit back and say, okay, what can we cut? And so that's kind of where we are. And this is something that we've been working on for a long time. And I know years ago, the salaries was kind of blown out of proportion by the formal administration. But we're trying to rope that in and bring it back in and make sense of it at this time. So with that said, I just want to say, census, twenty-twenty is coming soon and everyone counts. We will have to make sure we get the residents out and everybody counted, starting April first. We have to do that because it's money to us. It's revenue to not only the city, but to the Southland, to the state of Illinois. We, we can lose at least, I think, six thousand four hundred dollars per person. I think that's the amount. Per year for the next ten years. And that's a lot of revenue. That means that, you know, we will not be getting money for services from, from the federal government because of the census. So we got to make sure that every person is counted. So we have a, a complete count committee here in the city. So if anybody wants to be a part of that, please let me know. We're going to go out and we're going to try to reach all of the seniors and all of the kids and all of the adults. We want to make sure that everybody is counted. And so please, please, if you have relatives on April first, if they live in another state and they're in your house on April first, count them. Make sure they're counted, okay? We'll bring them in. Okay. So before we close, I wanted to ask Chief Kopeck to come, or Michelle, whichever one's going to come forward and talk about a project that, that the fire department's taking on. As I mentioned to you before, the fire department, the police department is one of the best fire departments in the Southland. And so just hear about the project that they have been.
Mayor, could I say, I just had one point of clarification because I know how misinformation is. It was stated that our police capped out at a hundred and three years, but... It was stated that our police capped out at a hundred and three years, but it was actually the old collective bargaining agreement, but it was closer to eighty-seven or eighty-nine, it was not a hundred thousand, so you know.
Right.
Folks hear that number, and that was.
Yeah, um, yeah, and, and that, like I said, you know, come, come to the Alderman, come to the City Council, let's talk about it, rather than spreading rumors, because, you know, chances out of rumors are not, uh, accurate. And the other thing, too, is that, uh, is the pension. Now, the State of Illinois just passed a bill where the State of Illinois is gonna combine pensions for fire and police. Anybody aware of that? And the reason for that is that because we cannot, as a, a municipality, sustain the pensions for the retirees. So the state is gonna help us out, and they're gonna, they're gonna consolidate those pensions, and hopefully that'll help us. And, uh, the other thing is, uh, we're looking at, well, maybe I'll have the chief to explain the consolidation that we're also looking at. So which one you want to talk about first?
Good evening, um, just wanted to actually, uh, we were reached out from a national program called Sleep in Heavenly Peace, um, and they're a program that goes to communities, and they identify children that don't have beds, um, kids that are sleeping on the floor. Um, there's several in our own community here, and, uh, some neighboring communities, so what this push does is they come in, um, and they actually supply, uh, all of the lumber, um, the, the power tools, everything like that. All that the Fire Department is supplying is a place for them to come in out of the elements and build. Um, however, they do encourage people to come out and swing a hammer, or, um, just be there to support. If you have no experience building beds, which I do not, um, they still want you to come out and help. Um, so, as I said, we were approached, and obviously, being the Fire Department, we always want to help, um, we've had the support of, you know, the city clerk, the mayor, um, so essentially what we're doing is inviting the community, if you would like to come, it's this Saturday from eight A.M. till one o'clock. That's at, uh, Fire Station Two, which is forty-five twenty, West One Hundred and Seventy-Fifth Street. Um, and if you are not able to come, but you would like to donate twin-sized sheets, brand-new tw- uh, twin sheets, pillows, bedding, anything like that, they're always welcoming that, um, and you can Google it, or we actually have a link on the Facebook, so if you're available, great, and if not, just keep us in your prayers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Residents of Country Club Hills, my name is Robert Kopeck, the interim Fire Chief. Um, we spoke about what the mayor's inferring to, is that we wrote for a grant to study consolidation for the Fire Department. Uh, consolidation's been a term that's been thrown around now, uh, for probably nearly two decades, about studying the long-term effects of consolidating fire service in the state of Illinois. So we've actually partnered, uh, uh, with the City of Markham Fire Department, we wrote a grant through the AFFI, um, which basically is gonna fund forty thousand dollars worth of research, and fees of, conducting a feasibility study to look at the effects of consolidation, if it makes sense financially for us, long-term pension obligations, salaries, uh, operational efficiencies. The theory is if we can make something more efficient, we can make it more cost-effective. Um, there's no long-term, um, endgame here, this study is truly just to begin to, um, scratch the surface on consolidation, and see if it's a feasible, reasonable option for Country Club Hills to consider, uh, moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
What event takes place on Saturday at the Fire Department?
Eight to one, Alderman.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Everybody's good?
All right.
All right. I need, um, oh. Uh, this is, uh, Black History Month, uh, February, this is our first meeting, uh, for the month of February. As you see, we got some, uh, Black History posters, uh, on the front of the diocese here. Uh, just want to let you know that there's a great Black History program that you announced, you did earlier. Yeah, we got this Black History program coming up at Hillcrest High School, and the date again is February twenty-ninth at, at three P.M., so please come out, it's specially put on for you residents, so come out and join us and have fun with that. Um, also, I want to inform you that next Monday, um, there will not be an admin meeting on next Monday, that's, uh, the seventeenth, that's the President's Day, so the City Hall will be closed. City Hall will be closed on the seventeenth. Okay, so our next meeting will be Monday, February the twenty-fourth, February the twenty-fourth. With that, I need a motion.
Motion for a German.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by the stand by?
Aye.
Ayes have it, motion carries. If you'd like to speak to the mayor or the Alderman, please come forward.